Hello and welcome to the Kosh. I am your host, Timber Smith, and thank you very much for joining us again. We appreciate that. I want to show love to those out there who've been contacting me and let me know that we have, uh, they've listened to some episodes, but you don't even know how much I appreciate that. And, uh, this week, I'm super excited about who we have for our guest. And I'll even tell you why. The reason I'm so excited about this guest in particular is because this is the guest that reached out to me and was like, you know what? I want to be on the show. And I was like, oh my God, that's amazing. Alright? So this week's guest is Chris Wright and, uh, Chris Wright is running for Oshkosh School Board. So, um, Chris, you, you, how you feeling over there?
I'm good, man.
You feeling good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy I could be on.
Hey, I'm happy that you are on also. So, Chris, um, can you please share a little something about yourself? And, uh, what's your connection to the city of Oshkosh?
Well, um, I first came to Oshkosh, uh, when I met my wife 15 years ago at, uh, Country USA.
What? Not, not, uh, not Country USA?
I mean, somehow she picked me out of the crowd. I mean, she might regret that now, but, uh, we've been going, uh, 15 years strong.
I've, you know what? I love that. So, so out of a crowd at Country USA in Oshkosh, she, she found you.
And yeah, and honestly, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to this. I, I think it's the best I ever danced in my whole life that night. So someone was looking out for me, man.
Is that, it was divine intervention?
It had to be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Look, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, uh, Chris, my personal opinion, opinion is, I don't think men pick their wives. I think wives pick us and then make sure that we know that they're the ones.
I have, I have, uh, three, uh, two daughters, a wife and a son, and I, I can speak from experience. I think the, the wives and the daughters do a whole lot of picking all our way around.
Facts. I'm gonna have to agree with that. Um, being, being one who, uh, has a daughter and wife, so, uh, the, the, uh, female role in my household definitely, uh, is more dominant. Yeah.
I mean, li- life is just better if you're good at agreeing and helping out. It's just, it just makes everything better, man. In my opinion.
Yeah, I will totally agree with that. Alright, so met the wife at Country USA. What else?
Uh, I have a daughter, Cora, who's in sixth grade, uh, daughter Ella that's in fourth grade, and Wyatt's in first grade. And my wife and I like to be really connected to the community. Uh, I coach, uh, youth basketball for fourth grade girls, and I help coach my son's team at the YMCA. Um, we run a, we actually run practices at our house in the summer for youths. And my wife is in charge of two Girl Scout troops.
Whoa, two? Why two?
Cause both of our daughters wanted to be in Girl Scouts.
So they, they, I'm gonna take it because of their age, they can't be in the same troop?
No, they couldn't. Um, actually just now, this last year, my one daughter isn't doing it anymore because of, uh, the COVID stuff, but my, uh, other daughter is still in Girl Scouts. So we volunteer a lot of time in the community. We like being involved with the youth in the community and our number one goal always is just to try to give all the kids great opportunities.
Um, hey, look, there's gotta be, look, there's, there's respect in, in that in particular. What I, what I like about that is, you know, you're running for Oshkosh School Board and you've got a vested interest.
Oh yeah, I got skin in the game.
Skin in the game.
If I don't do something the way I should do it, I gotta go to a basketball game or I gotta go out in the community cause we go on the community all the time and I'm gonna hear about it, you know?
Somebody gonna let you know, cause, uh, I'm not gonna lie, the, uh, the people of Oshkosh are not shy. They will definitely share how they feel about something.
No, but that's, that's one of the great things too. That's one of the things that I've enjoyed about, uh, running for this position. It's just been a lot of fun getting to meet a whole bunch of different people and getting to learn a whole bunch of different things about Oshkosh. I mean, I don't think you can do a good job in an elected position unless if you're out and meeting with people and talking to people and if you're willing to listen to all kinds of different viewpoints and to try to bring all those together, you know?
I, look. I think there's brilliance in what you're saying and I'll tell you why. Because an elected official is a representative. People forget that. Like the whole point of being, it's not that you can't have your own opinion, but your own opinion isn't what's supposed to be the, the deciding factor.
Right.
Your constituents, how they feel is supposed to actually be the deciding factor. So I appreciate that point of view.
And Oshkosh is cool, cause there's lots of different points of view from lots of different places. I mean, and, and to listen to all of it, you, you end up learning a lot yourself. I mean, I like to think that, or I know from working with youth in this community that if we give them the right opportunities, they can be successful. I think Oshkosh needs to be more what can we accomplish rather than talking about why can't we do this? Cause Oshkosh has a ton of potential.
So, alright, you know what? I'm not, I'm not gonna hold on to that any longer, cause we'll, we, I think we, we can come back around and we can get more in depth than that later on.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so you ready for the first segment?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
The first segment is called, "What in the World Is Going On With?" So that is where you start that phrase off and you end it with something that, that you feel some kind of way about. So I mean, you know, what in the world is going on with?
What in the world is going on with this weather, man? It was 20 below last week and tomorrow it's supposed to be 38 above and it's snowing in Texas. Why in God's name is it snowing in Texas?
Look, I'm gonna be honest with you. I, I feel for those people in Texas, like, cause they're not, look, that ain't what they're prepared for. You know, um, I know that we here in Wisconsin are looking at the people in Texas thinking, you know, this, that and another. But there, that's just not how they get down. So the struggle, the things that are happening in Texas, I'm not gonna lie. It hurts my soul a little bit, you know?
Yeah, it's sad.
It is sad. You know, how many people there don't even have a winter coat?
Yeah. I mean, they got, they've had such wild weather swings. It's crazy. They've went from hurricanes to winter storm warnings. I mean, in one year, man, and, uh, I, I remember when the hurricane came through, I, I was talking to a dude. He, uh, designs their electrical stuff. Do you know in Texas, they put air conditioners on the roofs?
No.
Yeah, they do, for real. My neighbor's an electrical engineer and he was telling me all about his fascinating stuff, man.
Can you just, uh, break down, why, why do you put the air conditioning on the roof?
I don't know, man. I don't know exactly why. He, I didn't get into depth with him about that much, but can Google it and check it out, cause I Googled it. I just didn't read into it, man. It was interesting.
I'll tell you what, let's just bring your neighbor on to the Kosh and he can go ahead and educate us and, uh, bless us with the whys, cause maybe it's something we all need to know.
Maybe Oshkosh will all of a sudden have air conditioners on the roof. That'd be interesting.
Hey, I don't know. If there's, if there's something we need to know, maybe we just don't know. Alright, alright, well, you know what? My, what in the world is going on with? Is the vaccine. What in the world is going on with the vaccine and, and look, my thing is this. I'm, I'm ready. That's what I'm gonna say. Look, I just want people, let, let's just get it out for the, for those who are ready, right? Because there's a, there's a large constituency right now, according to reporting, who feels some kind of way about it, right?
Yeah.
So my thing is this, if they don't wanna do it, that's good, but while people are ready to do it, let's get, let's go on and make that happen.
I mean, it's, it's wild. We had, we had this COVID pandemic and now we have the cure, basically. And the whole cure is just now up to us to get out the vaccine as fast as we possibly can, so we can get back to normal. I mean, so I hope that we can get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible. The way it sounds from the news is they're having some supply chain issues and some different things like that. Which hopefully they can figure out, cause personally, I think all teachers should be getting vaccinated. We should be getting all of our direct line workers vaccinated. We should be getting everybody back to doing what they wanna do. It's just getting that out as fast as we can, man.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. At this point, let's, uh, let's just try to make it happen for those who are ready to make it happen, right? Cause, um, you know, and, and I'm just saying, right now, I'm ready. So, so don't, don't wait and give me time to talk myself out of it, cause I, look, I didn't start in the place of being ready. I've gotten to the place of being ready. My original place was, I ain't getting that shot.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, um, and so to, to actually think about it, listen to it, and I've had an opportunity to talk to some professionals out in the field. Um, I've changed my, my view on it. Get me my shot, so I don't change my view again.
I mean, straight up, it's a, it's kinda a miracle. They, they came up with this vaccine this fast.
Beyond a miracle.
You know, I mean, and we've got it and now we just need to all get it and be good. I mean, I wanna get back to life as normal. It's, I coached basketball games, uh, this weekend and it's just weird watching kids play with masks on. You know, and they do, but I mean, I, I feel for them, for real, cause it, it stinks. Especially with kids that have asthma and stuff. Let's get these shots and let's get back to normal.
I'm, I'm with you and that's, and really that's my reason why I changed my mind about it is that I just want us to get back to normal. There's, there's something to be said for that. I think that, I think the vaccine is the, is the call of, it's not what you can do, uh, it's not what your country can do for you, it's what you can do for your country.
Yeah, for sure.
And I think that is this modern day moment. Getting your vaccine is that modern day moment.
There's no question at all. I mean, let's look at what this pandemic's done to us, man. I mean, just mental health issues alone. I mean, I'm obviously, cause I'm running for school board, I've been talking to parents and stuff and as many as I can find and kids are having anxiety, depression, their grades are dropping and we have a way to get back to normal, so we can get our kids and our lives back to normal and get back to doing what we do. And that's a miracle. We have that opportunity, you know? We just gotta take advantage of it and get it done.
I, you know what? I think sometimes it's like, we gotta get out of our own heads.
Yeah.
And sometimes you just gotta do what you gotta do, you know, and, and I do believe that this might be one of those situations that you gotta, you gotta get out of your own head and just do what, what's best for our country.
Yeah, yeah, 100% agree, for sure.
Awesome. Alright, well, you ready for the next segment?
Yeah, let's roll with it.
Alright, the next segment is word slash phrase association. So what I just need you to do is tell me what comes to mind when I say these words. You ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, food.
Ribs.
Facts. You know what? He caught me. He caught me speechless. I have nothing to respond to that because you know what? Food, ribs, facts.
Dude, I got this North Carolina barbecue sauce. You gotta try it out, man.
Wait, who's it by?
Uh, I have to call my wife up on that, man, but it's, I bought it in North Carolina.
Oh.
And brought it back and it is some good stuff, dude.
Okay.
I'll take a picture of it and text it to you.
I'll take it. Can I ask you a question? So, so do you, do you own a smoker? Do you get out there and smoke your ribs? Is, are you that man?
No, I don't, but I should be that man, cause, cause that's, that's, that stuff's great, man. I just, my wife, my wife doesn't trust my cooking abilities too much.
Look, if you learn how to smoke, that's where you show off your cooking ability. Smoking is for grown folks.
I need some help with that game, man. It's my, uh, my cooking abilities. My wife, my wife ain't giving me much leash there.
Oh man, does she let you in the kitchen?
I mean, she lets me in the kitchen, but she don't trust me in the kitchen.
I, I'm not gonna lie, I've, I've been there, but, uh, I, I have trust now. I've earned it. Okay, ribs, alright. Ready for the next one? Alright, cocktails slash beer.
I think diet rum and Coke. That's my go-to.
That the go-to?
Diet rum, because I think that by some way, by drinking diet, that I'm shaving off a few pounds. And, cause I'm cheap, man. I'm as cheap as you can find and I can go to the store and get a $10, $15 bottle of Admiral Nelson. I buy, I buy the cheap stuff. I'm a cheap dude, so.
Look, I'll be honest with you. I, I like to, I don't like to use the word cheap. I like to use the word affordable. So I, I am that man also, but the one thing I don't, there's a couple of things I don't cheap out on. Liquor, because your body feels that. Toilet paper, because you, cheap toilet paper will cause issues. And Miracle Whip, because Miracle Whip is not mayonnaise and therefore pay the money, get what you need.
I like that, dude. I like that. Yeah, I should probably heed the more, warning on the cheap alcohol, but I, I just think I'm too cheap. I mean, I still had clothes from high school until my wife started throwing them away. And that's like, we're talking like 20 plus years ago, man, when I was in high school.
Why do I feel like we need to have her on here with you the next time? We gonna have to bring the wife on, cause she gonna, she gonna snitch. She gonna tell all of it.
Dude, I, I, straight up, man, I, I can just be, I can be coming home from work and I, and I'll be looking and there will be my, my, uh, whatever basketball camp shirt I had from high school and I'll just find it in the trash. She's like, there's too many holes in that man that's 22 years old. You're embarrassing me wearing that out in the community, dude. I had to just get rid of it.
Okay, look, I gotta respect that. I feel that, man, okay? You ready for the, um, next word? Music.
I, I like, I actually like country music and I like hip hop. My daughter hates country music. So like now whenever I drive with them in the car, and I mean, I'm telling you, I'm like a full-time taxi service. I'm like 24/7, we're going to this sports event, we're going to this sports event, we're going to this thing. So they're always messing with my radio, man. I can't listen to anything I wanna listen to anymore, cause it's just getting changed. I might have to put some real rules in with that pretty soon, but I like, I like country music. I like hip hop. And that's what I get down to.
You know when you get your radio back? When they get their own cars?
Yeah.
It's a pricey freedom.
Yeah, my insurance would probably, good Lord, when I was a driver, 16 or 17, I can't even imagine. They're getting close though. It's ever, I mean, they're close. My oldest, I, I don't think she likes to talk to me half the time. She's going through those teenage, starting to go through those teenage years and.
Nah, man, you, you're just dad, man. Seriously, like that's, that's almost disrespectful.
It's a funny, funny story. My oldest, she hates my signs I'm putting out everywhere. We, we drive by my signs I'm putting on people's yards and she's like, dad, take that down. That's embarrassing, dad. My other kids are like, dad, that's cool. My oldest is like, dad, that's not cool, man. That's not cool, dude. I'm like, I'm like, come on.
So as, uh, let me just ask this, did, did your oldest understand that you are running to help make change? Possibly for things that are to help people, her and people like her?
I mean, I think she just straight up would be like, my dad ain't as cool as my dad thinks he is, so, you know, like, I don't know. I, I have to work on her as my own vote. My two youngest are all game about it. My oldest, I gotta work on her myself. I'm like, I drive, I drive you around all the time. I should at least be getting, you want me to help a little bit here, little lady?
Right, she, she could, wait, she could at least be one of your supporters, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I'm gonna have my wife make her up a shirt and put it on top of her pillow one day and see if, see where that goes.
Hey, alright, let me know. Well, we'll put it into the, uh, the show's notes. I love it. Alright, next word, education.
What comes to mind right now is teachers, schools, working through this pandemic. I mean, I, I gotta give, far as education right now, I gotta give the biggest shout out to the teachers that had all our kids in school the last two days on Thursday and Friday. That's a big deal. I mean, it's a big deal for families. Uh, it's a big deal for the kids and they gotta get all the credit for doing that right now, for sure.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more, but I am, I am so pro educator, because I, I've been lucky enough to work a little bit in education, but not as a teacher per se, but, um, that, you know, they are the found, they are one of the foundations of a community. You know, your educators are truly teaching the next generation of citizens. So you got, if you're not cheering them on, you are truly rooting against the future.
I mean, think about what they've all been through in the last year. I mean, we've all been through stuff. There are no doubt about that. No doubt about that, but they don't have control over five-day-a-week school or virtual school or hybrid school.
Every time, every time I turned around, it was a new something.
Yeah, and they just gotta roll with it. I mean, one day they're teaching in a classroom to 10 kids. The next minute, they gotta be putting together videos and, you know, and doing virtual schooling and they gotta be washing their hands 40 times and making sure the kids are socially distancing. And I tell you what, man, I, I don't think I'd be that great at that. I mean, it's a tough job.
That's beyond a tough job and, and people out there who, who ain't given the proper respect to all of those changes. If your current job demanded those same things of you, can you live up to that?
I mean, it's tough, man. I, I work in healthcare. And my, my, my job is I do a screen and what the screen does is it helps people with disabilities and the elderly. You're, we're supposed to help them get the resources they need to remain in their homes. So I've been going into homes for the last four months, just to make sure these people are getting what they need, you know? And that they're getting taken care of, so that they can, uh, stay in their houses. That's a big deal. You know, we gotta make sure they have the right people coming in and to support them. We're talking, you know, kids with autism, people with dementia, people that have been in car accidents, the whole nine yards and it, for me, just, I have to socially distance and wear a mask and it's hard for me just doing that one-on-one stuff. You know, making sure I got all that right. Nonetheless, a whole school of kids at the same time, man. That's, that's a lot more than, that's, that's a lot going on, for sure.
Yes, and hey, big shout out, much love to all our educators out there. Just know that, uh, it's not said enough, but we are in your corner and cheering for you here at the Kosh.
Yeah, and there's no doubt, they've been, and then there's the political stuff surrounding it. You know, the battle between in-school, in-person school and hybrid school and there's real strong feelings on that whole deal, you know? And the, that ain't, the teachers, no, I, I just wanna say this right now, no teachers take that personally at all. That's, you know, you guys are doing a great job. You have no choice over what the board decides as far as five-day or hybrid or anything like that. Just, just know that there's respect in the community for what you're all doing out there, for sure.
I, uh, my challenge with that whole thing is this. There was a time, not that long ago, that people were challenging the incomes of our educators, right?
Yeah.
And my thing is this, for, for, during this time period, and it's been a short time period, it may seem like a long time, but during this very short time period of when we didn't really wanna, uh, properly, let's say, properly compensate our educators, right? We wanted them to protect our children from shooters. We now have asked them to go work in a pandemic and put their lives and their family's lives in danger?
Right.
But you know what I ain't heard yet? I ain't heard nobody talk about compensation for them.
I actually been reading a lot on this issue in particular and because I think the first, to have a great organization, have a great school district, you gotta have buy-in. You gotta be able to get good employees. I think we need to pay good teachers what they deserve. Um, and this is a fact. I know you got the facts button over there for sure.
No, I just keep saying it, facts.
I mean, I mean, straight up, our district pays 10 grand, I'd say on average, less than neighboring districts, right? So I've got neighbors that are teachers, good people, you know? And they don't teach in Oshkosh, because they can go to Findlay and make 10K more. You know, but the disconnect is kinda too, where we have the highest paid administrators in the whole area. You know, so we've got administrators making 206K and teachers making 10K less than, than, uh, surrounding teachers.
That sounds like, uh, that sounds like the typical problem, uh, in a lot of cases, not just, uh, in education in this case, but where no one wants to pay the people on the front line.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're the one doing the, they're putting in the, the, the work, man. I mean, they are the direct. When I was a kid, you know, so I, I graduated from college and whatnot, but, um, I, uh, I, I had to work harder in some subjects to learn them, you know? For whatever reason, I was really good, it seemed like, in English and social studies and stuff, but I had to work my butt off in math. Like I think most people do. Most people got something they gotta work hard at and I had to spend my time on that and, uh, so I could get to where I needed to be. And I'll tell you what, good teachers are what help you learn that stuff. That, and at Oshkosh, I was in, uh, that, uh, study hall area all the time, where they have tutors set up, the math lab or whatever. I don't know if they still got that or not.
Oh yeah, yeah, you're talking UW-Oshkosh.
When I had to pass those hard math classes to get this degree, man, I was in there like three hours a day.
Yeah, yeah.
And without their help, I would've had a tough time. So it's not, these kids, to get them to where we need to go, man, we need to put the right supports in place too, for sure.
I'd definitely give it up to UW-Oshkosh's math lab. Uh, I, I'm not too shady on math, but then again, I ain't had to do it at that level for a long time. So what I'm gonna say is, since I ain't had to use it, I might've lost it. Alright, well, okay, you know what? I'm going to, you wanna do one more word?
It's up to you, man.
Alright, wait, no, no, man, it's your show. How you gonna get down there? We got one more word.
We can do it, for sure.
Communication.
That's everything, man. Not everything, but it's a big thing.
Yeah, what you, what you, what you mean?
I mean, like, you have to have, well, no matter what you wanna accomplish, you have to have buy-in. And to get buy-in, you have to communicate things the right way. You, you have to put out a message that people wanna listen to and people wanna be a part of. I mean, most of the time, people just wanna feel like they're being heard and they wanna know what's going on, straight up. And, uh, I'm gonna be honest, man, I think we can get better at that in our school district.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to agree with you on that. Um, and, and, and I just think in any big organization, right, that, who you service, your primary service, so, um, particularly government, right? Not necessarily private sector, because private sector's primary function is to be profitable, right? But that's not government's function. Government's function is to serve people. And if your job is to serve the people, then there need, you need to know your people. I have a problem when we don't know our constituents, who we are serving. There's a lot of decisions made in a, in a, in a very, uh, micro vacuum. Where there's these few people and, and I'll go as far as to even challenge the fact that these people are disconnected, because they live where they live and they don't live in regular working-class neighborhoods, because they've had success. And, and so they're not even having conversation with their, who the real constituency is.
I think people some, lose track sometimes of that. I mean, I, uh, I, I, the most important part of the process is buy-in from their people. And the only way you're gonna get buy-in from your community at large and good collaboration is through letting people be a part of it and wanting to be a part of it. I mean, the really good school districts, they don't just talk it, they do it. And what they do is they bring in large, different segments of the population, right? And they sit them down and they, they have, they sit down, they talk about, what do we wanna achieve, right? What do we wanna achieve together? What can we agree on achieving together? Let's set these goals together. Let's communicate about, communicate about them together, get on board with them together. And then let's hire an administrator and good people that can help us execute them, you know? Let's do this together. One thing that I like that used to be done, Oshkosh for Education, used to work on beautifying our schools here in Oshkosh. One thing that I like that used to be done, Oshkosh for Education, used to work on beautifying our schools here in Oshkosh. I thought that was cool. You know, that was a private group just chipping in, you know? If you chip in and give the right vision, you can do a lot of things, man. And Oshkosh can do a lot of things. I just feel like people sometimes feel disconnected and don't know where to even start.
I'll agree with that. Um, but what, and, and here's my thing. I also want Oshkosh, I have crazy love for the Oshkosh School District because, you know, my daughter came up through it all the way from, you know, there's educators, there's people whose names I can think of off the top of my head, like uh Mrs. Crawl and
Yeah.
Mr. Bierski, you know, there, there's people who truly made
Right.
my child an amazing person.
Oh, yeah.
I, I without a doubt wanna give uh much, much love, cause we do have, I don't think we give our school district enough credit for the quality of what it is.
We don't at all. And that's, that's part of the communication thing too. You know, like, I'd love to, eh, this is my, part of my vision through talking to a lot of different people is if you're not showing your success stories in the right way and getting out your success stories in the right way to the community, then we're not giving them our due props, one, and two, we're not marketing our, what we have here like we should to the rest of the area, you know? Cause eh, I'm, the biggest thing I've learned about schools, and this is just straight up. Two of my kids, one of my kids goes to Carl Trager Middle and then my two younger kids, at the beginning of the year, we switched to Grace Lutheran. And uh, s- straight up customer service, you know, like, straight up customer service is a big deal.
Bruh.
We gotta look at each kid and each family as not a number and as a um, you know, you know, as a person that almost like a customer you wanna take care of, you know, you wanna, you wanna make sure you're connected with them and we wanna communicate when we're doing a really good job with those things.
Yes. Um, what I, what I'm all about is I, and, and, and so I like to, I like to straddle the bridge of um, business and, and government or, or, or people.
Yeah.
Right, community.
Yeah.
Um, and my thing is this, uh, what most people, whenever we're doing these things or whenever we're talking about the things or even the investment into our school system, people forget that one of the number one things that a big business looks at when they're thinking about where they're going to relocate or if they're gonna open in your, your area or if they're going to expand in your area or move out of your area is your education system.
Yeah.
Because that's what brings talent in.
Yeah.
It's what brings in other people that want to be there. The first thing that most people, most regular working-class families look at when they're going to move is the school district.
Yeah.
That they're about to move to. So if we don't invest in it, we're, we're only harming ourselves in the long run.
Let's be straight up too about this. I mean, we need to be straight up about what choices there are now for, and there always has been for kids that live in this area. I mean, you've got Kimberly School District, you've got the Appleton Schools, you've got great schools, you know, that kids can make choices to go to or not.
There's some you didn't throw in here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on and throw in one of the hot ones. Okay, Kimberly is super hot, right? People are super interested always there.
Yeah.
And an, another one is Winnicott County. Oh, and I hear so much all the time.
Yeah.
About the Winnicott County School District, right?
Yeah.
Anytime, what, what's Winnicott County, twenty minutes?
Not even, depends on where you live in this, live in this Oshkosh area.
So fifteen minutes.
Some, some people probably get there in ten.
Right.
If you're out on the, we're all out on the west part.
So here's my thing, you know, we can either invest and become amazing or we can lose to something where it's fifteen minutes away or ten minutes away, where people, you know, um, even Amro, I've heard, I've heard really good things about the Amro School District.
So many peop- kids that I know that I've coached and I've known since they're little kids that my kids went to school with. So many of those kids have left and gone to Amro. It's sad. Do you wanna know the real number? How many kids live in Oshkosh School District that go to a different school?
Well, the, you know what, we'll come to that.
Alright, alright.
Eh, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to that and there's a reason why. Alright, so we, we're gonna wrap up communication.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Alright, we, we wrap that up. That was, that went hard.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fun.
Next segment is the Naughty slash Heroes Corner. So this is an opportunity where you get to pick someone you wanna nominate. You know, whether they, you feel some kinda way about, and doesn't have to be a person, it can be whatever, an organization, a thing or you know, something you, you think is real cool.
Well, I wanna give a, you know, uh, there's a couple things that I think in Oshkosh, I need to get a shout out. Uh, one, all the things Heroes of Oshkosh did during this pandemic. Uh, to get people housing, to make sure they got food and um, I mean, straight up, we got organizations that have donated tons of food to different classrooms and the different things. I mean, that's beautiful.
Yes. Look, I, I'll be the first to say that uh, Oshkosh has community, much love. We, we are, this is a great community.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Eh, the, the, the different things we have to do here and the different people we have uh in our community and the way we look out for one another, it's, it's a great place to live and raise a family.
Okay, so, and anyone else in that corner you, you putting?
Uh, I already talked about the teachers, giving them a shout out for doing their thing this last week.
Alright.
Um, I don't know who to put in a naughty list. Ah, I do know who to put in a naughty list.
Okay, eh, eh, you ain't got to, but if you want to.
I'll just give the naughty award to my son Wyatt and anyone around here knows, knows a shout out to him, man.
Uh-oh.
He's a sev- he's a seven-year-old boy. He's full of energy. You take him to a basketball game, it's like chasing a cheetah around.
Oh, man.
Inside of a, of an arena, man. He's, but he's a great kid.
Wait, that doesn't sound like naughty. That just sounds like uh, nature.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like he's doing his job.
Yeah, yeah, he does it well, man. He does it well.
Fair enough. Alright, so this is uh the time where we move on to the topic of the week and the topic of the week, you get to uh, that's, this your topic. So uh, topic of the week is community collaboration.
I think this is my community topic of the week. Um, and uh, I, I chose this topic because I believe that everything derives from collaboration and working together. Um, I've talked about this with city council candidates right now, um, business leaders, everybody. Uh, everyone I meet with. Uh, it's how can we work together? How, you do this thing great, you do this thing great, how can we put it together and make it all even better?
Bruh.
You know, how, how do we do that? I've seen just so many small examples of it within our community that it, it's awesome. Uh, because your idea and you, eh, th- this is, this, I'll give an example, right? So I was on the town of Algoma Town Board for four years. I got elected to two terms. I didn't run my, my last term just cause uh, I don't feel like people should be elected and put in positions forever. You know, I feel like.
Yeah, you, you believe in term limits.
Yeah, I believe new people gotta, you gotta give new blood, you know?
I like that.
You know, you gotta have, you, you, eh, you, you gotta give new ideas a, a chance to grow.
I'd, I'd like that. I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, my one thing though, my, my big thing, when I ran for town board was, we had this land where there was supposed to be a park for ten years. And that park never got built. And I'm like, I think I might run for town board so we can build that park. I don't think it should be that hard to build that park. I think if we talk to the right people and figure it out, I think we can build the park. So the park's Jones Park and you can go check it out. But in my uh, was it second or third year on the board, we built the park. And Rotary donated the trees, cause I knew someone on Rotary.
Yes.
So we went and pitched to Rotary and Rotary's like, let, we'll put in the trees.
Bruh.
And all these people donated to it and that was just because, eh, I mean, I'm telling you, it took hundreds of hours to do this, man, hundreds of hours. Um, but uh, when you talk to, when you bring a bunch of different people together on a shared goal and a shared project, you'd be amazed what you can get done.
I agree with you. I agree with you one hundred percent and uh, out there, little, little applause to uh Rotary because uh, they do amazing things.
Yeah.
You know, hey, look, and you're right, it, it takes collaboration to get the greatest results.
You gotta bring the pieces together. You know, like, we've got all this great stuff in Oshkosh. You know, I, I, I'll talk to Heroes of Oshkosh, I'll talk to Rotary, whoever, you know, like, hey, I, we got this thought, this group's working on this, you know, is that something you guys are interested in partnering up with? You know, and you'd be amazed at what you can get done in this community. People like to make it better. We all wanna have a better community. You know, we all really do.
Yes, I, I think that's a misconception. Eh, you know what, I think people, you know, when you have these um conversations that, that where you're kinda feel like there's these, there's conflict, right?
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, when you strip away everything, you know, strip away a viewpoint, strip away politics, strip away all the things.
Yeah.
Nine out of ten times, we all want the same things.
We all get caught up in, I'm just gonna say, we all get caught up in dumb stuff. Come up with dumb reasons to not do good things. I mean, we come up with uh, I, and frankly, we come up with dumb reasons to be mad at each other.
Bruh.
You know, all different things. I mean, every day, you know, like.
Oh, my god, yes.
I mean, there's so much, everyone, eh, my belief is everyone has so much more in common than they have different.
We really do.
I mean.
That I, I am a firm believer in that in so many ways because I think where people forget, there is one overall commonality that ties us all together and that is American citizenry.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're all citizens, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm not trying to say anything against those who are not, but what I am saying is that the majority of us out here trying to do this, we're fighting each other even though we're the same, we, we theoretically are on the same team.
Yeah, some of us are like that and I don't, I love my neighbors. I got great neighbors right now, but you watch some of those sitcoms or TV shows, where someone's got a neighbor that they, that's all up in their business all the time. That's caring if their shrubs one foot too high or not, not low enough or whatever and
Bruh.
We're killing each, we're getting at each other over just dumb stuff all the time, man. We're losing sight of the big picture. You know, the big picture is in Oshkosh, do we all, all as a group want to have good educations for our children and have a school district we can be proud of? Yes. Do we all agree on how that can be done? No. But why can't we all sit and talk to each other about our different ideas? You know, and come up of, and let's, let's do the things we do agree on, you know?
I think we can do some of the things we don't necessarily agree on if we just, there's usually minor tweaks that can be done, so there is consensus.
Yeah.
But alright, so here's where my challenge comes in on that.
Yeah.
The problem that I typically have is that there are voices who are heard and there are voices who are not.
Yeah.
And that drives me insane.
Yeah.
Right? Because you know, Oshkosh is a, is a growing community.
Yeah.
It is one, a changing community.
Yeah.
Um, there's more voices.
Right.
And so the, the voices who are used to being in charge, they need to listen to more other voices.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, it's all about, I look at it like this, you know? Eh, and this might be a cheesy analogy, but whatever, I, I think it, it kinda gets the job done in some ways. Let's look at Oshkosh as a big pie, right? We all got a slice of the pie, you know? Some people though think their slice is bigger than the other person, when it's not. We're all, we're all the same. We're all, we all are the same thing, man. You know what? We're all, we're all living here.
Right.
And we need to talk to each other about how we can make it better and we need to have buy-in and everyone needs to have a stake in it. If you wanna have a great, I mean, people can do what they wanna do, right? But if we wanna have a great school district, great community, it's gonna take buy-in from the people in it.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to take on challenging issues and talk about them with one another.
Uh, I can, yes. And, and I think there also needs to be a point where people need to be able to be heard.
Yeah.
And you need to go places where people can be heard or you need to invite them to the table to be heard.
I mean, why do people think, and not to interrupt at all, but why, why do people think it's cool to um to not listen to everyone else's different viewpoints? I mean, it's, I think it's a good thing to disagree sometimes. You know what I mean? It's not a bad thing. We don't have to hate each other or agree on everything. But we eh, we don't grow if we don't listen to each other. You know, and if we don't try to understand what, what, what different groups have got going on. I mean, people think it's like war sometimes to disagree over stuff. Whatever, man, I mean, I, I have this theory, let's work towards making everything better and you do you. You do you. I mean, if you're not out hurting somebody, if you're not out beating somebody up, if you're not out being a fool, you do you. I don't care. You know what I mean? Like.
Yes, I do know what you mean. I do agree with that too. Look, we can, I, my, my challenge really comes in at the point in which there's a lot of things that people, uh, my term is gonna be poo-poo and shoe-shoe. They poo-poo and shoe-shoe things when people bring up things, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I have a specific example, but I don't know if I'm gonna bring it up at this time, but what I will say is that I, I had tuned in to a school board task force meeting. It was an official school board meeting, right?
Okay.
And the conversation was about more um, more, more uh, school liaison officers.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've heard that co- that's a big conversation right now.
Right.
And that is a difficult topic.
It's, eh, is it?
I mean, for some people it is.
I, I don't, I, here's my thing. Look, I'm not saying we shouldn't have school liaison officers. My question is, is how many?
Right.
A.
Yeah.
Number two, or B, um, who should, who's, who's paying for that? Because eh, from my understanding, from watching this particular uh, meeting
Yeah.
that only the people in the city are paying for that, even though there are others who go to the Oshkosh School Districts.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying they gotta pay half or anything like that, but I mean, you know,
Right.
kids go, you know, there's gotta kick in, you know, some.
Yeah.
And then um, the, the other part about that is if there are those who wanna know how does it affect certain constituencies? That, that conversation shouldn't be shoe-shoed or poo-pooed. I watched that conversation get shoe-shoed when someone um, brought it up.
Yeah.
And said, you know, people are asking, you know, because eh, you know, does, does those funds have to be a liaison officer?
I've heard uh, there's, and I've been looking into this too, and there, there's some different opinions that those funds might be used better to have a social worker instead of a school liaison officer.
Yeah. And, and, and I'm, I'm just saying, look, I'm not gonna pretend like I know the answer.
It's not an easy answer at all.
No.
I mean, the school, the liaison officers are there because sometimes some hardcore stuff goes on in there where you need somebody.
Look.
You know, at West and.
Facts.
I mean.
And, and I'm not trying to say that about any particular school. What I'm trying to say that about is about teenagers.
Yeah.
Teenagers do dumb things.
Yeah, I was talking about this with my friend last night over a beer and he gave me this analogy. Who's gonna deal with the big tough dude when he goes crazy? You know, in, in the school, if you don't have no one there to deal with the big tough dude.
But here's my question to that then.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Because I know the person you're talking about.
You do, you do, you do, yeah, for sure. And you know, you know, for sure, man.
The big tough dude always existed. So when there were no officers in the schools who dealt with that big tough dude. Right? Cause this ain't new.
Depends.
This ain't new. I, I, I went to Whitefish Bay High School. We had no officers, no nothing. We had nothing.
Yeah.
You know what we had? Principal, vice principal, counselors. So when the big tough dude did big tough dude things that was stupid, those same people still dealt with those things.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't care what school you go to. I don't care if you go to the suburb school or the city school or, or, or the country school. That dude exists.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you can't tell me that there's officers everywhere.
There are.
How many, how many officers are sitting in rural schools?
Not many.
If any.
I mean, they, so this is a true, true. true, true deal. My dad was a law enforcement officer forty years, and, uh, he was an elected sheriff for eight years of, uh, Chino County, actually, and they had multiple, multiple schools in that area, and, uh, one officer covered, I don't know, Tigerden, Grusham, Wittenberg, I mean, they had, they had a lot of area, you know, and 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 what, and what you're saying is true. I had thoughts, cause I, cause I, when I think about something like this, I try to think of possible solutions always. So, we, we, we state a problem, we state, you know, some statistics to back that up and whatnot, and then my mind automatically goes to the possible solutions. So, one thought that I had, that I talked, and I talked with community members about this, is what if, so a police officer with a bachelor's degree can become a social worker if they take four classes and pass a test?
Oh, you know what?
What if we had cross-functionality in those positions? You know what I mean? Um.
Bruh, that's brilliant. Actually, I've never thought of that, but that is brilliant.
I mean, that, that was my first thought. Um, you can take a police officer and cross-train them.
Right.
And just like we do with multiple other things.
Well, you know, and and I will say, I do believe now, I don't know if this was, I don't know if this is actually true, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna think it was true. I know it didn't used to be true, but I'm thinking for the, the Oshkosh Police Force, it might require a bachelor's degree now? Is that true?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Not, that might be their preference, you know?
It might be a preference, and 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 I'm not honing education. I wanna clarify that I don't think that a degree defines
Nah, not at all.
Workers and people and servants by any means, but this was just about having those certain credentials. You know, if you already have a bachelor's degree, there's so many classes you gotta take to get licensed to be a social worker, and that, that's not a bad concept.
Cause what we're trying to do, I mean, from what I gather from talking to people, is we're trying to get the right people in place that can address this different subset of needs.
Yes.
And people are trying to discuss what those people can be.
Yes.
And what their skill set needs to be to address these needs we have in the Oshkosh School District, and, um, well, first off, I mean, let's, if we're being straight about it, the thing that matters the most is what person you got in what spot. You know what I mean? Like.
What do you mean? I I I don't, I don't know if I'm following, following, but I wanna make sure I understand.
There's super great police liaison officers out there.
Yes.
And then there's some that aren't. There's super great social workers out there, and there's some that aren't.
Well, that's, you know what?
In every industry.
Right, that's just period. In any career you have, there are those who are very amazing at what they do, and then there are those who, um, maybe, maybe is really not their calling.
Yeah, so, I mean, it starts with the people.
I agree with that. And so, my thing is this, I I'm not saying we shouldn't have more law enforcement in in our schools.
Yeah.
Right? But I'm also not convinced we do either.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of in a place that I need, I need our people to be heard.
Yeah.
And in that particular meeting, someone asked the question about how does more law enforcement affect our students of color?
Uh huh. I saw the statistics on it.
And 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 I, I don't know, as far as statistics and arrest, but I mean, I'm talking something that I'm not quite sure anyone measures.
Yeah.
Which is, how does it feel?
How does it feel? Yeah.
You know, you can show me this and that, and this is the arrest rate, and this is the actual this, that, and another, but at the end of the day, how does it feel to those, towards those students, and how is our law enforcement, um, engaging those students?
Yeah.
In 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 a sense, because you know what? I think law enforcement, I've got friends who are in law enforcement, I fully support law enforcement, and I, I think, I put them right up there with the best because at the end of the day, they are public servants. They take, they take care of us, that's a hard job.
Like the hardest job you could ever imagine, man.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna put it right up there with, uh, uh, elementary school teachers, because I think that's hard, hard as, uh, I think that's pretty hard, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm, at the end of the day, I think anytime you gotta deal with our public, a diverse public where you don't even know what might be coming at you, I think that is definitely hard.
Yeah.
Um.
To, to segue to your discussion on how do they, how does it feel? I'll be honest, I don't know. The only way I can learn and be a better voice for all of Oshkosh is if I listen. That's why, I mean, I I don't know the answers to everything, and I'm not gonna know the answers to everything ever, but I will be the dude that'll say, you can call me. We can sit down and talk, and I'll listen to you at any time, and I will, I will hear you, I'll listen to you, and I'll, and we can talk back and forth about what we maybe think we can do together. You know, or how we can face these challenges together, cause I don't know.
I, I, I don't know.
I don't know what I don't know.
Yep.
You know what I mean? And the only way I can know what I know is by having people provide me with their stories and their advice and and their opinions.
So, Chris, you, you, you telling me you, uh, if if you are privileged enough to get on our school board, you got a nice open door policy?
Oh, yeah.
You can hear out our constituents?
You should just see my house, man.
Uh oh.
My house in the summer is just littered with people. I'm telling you.
Is that what's up?
People coming over from all different places, and I mean, it's like a kids' zone, and everyone's welcome.
I'm gonna wait for my invite.
I'm a socializer. Anyone that knows me will tell you, I like people, and I like all kinds of different people.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm only coming over if you're making ribs. Look, you don't, you brought it up. I'm, I'mma call it out, and and don't invite me by thinking I'm gonna make the ribs. Cause you know what? And and the point is, is I make amazing ribs, but I'm coming to be a guest, so.
I do have to show you that Carolina sauce, man.
Alright.
I gotta figure something out with that, for sure.
Yes, cause you shouldn't have amazing sauce and not have something to do with that.
I know, I'm, I'm failing on that.
Yep.
If I had to be a grater right now, I I'd have to give myself a straight up F on not utilizing that sauce.
I'm gonna tell you what you do. When you don't know what to do, you give it to somebody who does.
I could be like my neighbor. He calls up, calls up Gabe's and says, hook me up with some ribs and drop him off, man.
You know what? Brilliant. Bruh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on and give that brilliance. Alright. So, is there anything else you wanna share, uh, at this point in time about, uh, community collaboration or anything?
I mean.
I mean, I felt like, um, we, that, we covered ground.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just a dude trying to get involved, cause I've got skin in the game, and I think, and I hope that I can make a positive difference. That's it. I ain't doing this for nothing else. In fact, uh, if anything, I mean, no one, no one gets involved with this, in my opinion, from, cause you don't barely get paid anything, and I don't think you necessarily should. It's kind of like a volunteer position where you just wanna try to help out the community, you know, and, and I, and I just see, uh, Oshkosh as a place with good things happening, and, uh, hopefully I can, hopefully if I'm lucky enough, and I don't know, I mean, I've never ran in a race this many people to vote for me or not vote for me, or go in a cubicle and check my name or not, I don't know, man. I, I, this is, this is new to me, but I, but I will be someone that will reach out to people. I will not be someone who will not listen to you, and I will try to bridge things and bring people together.
You know what I appreciate about what you just said? There's such a sincere authenticity about what you just said.
Yeah, it's what I do, like, it's what I like to do. So, this is true, so my daughter, the F V A is, the F V A is a beast, man. If you wanna be good at sports in the F V A, you know this, cause you had a daughter that played soccer. You gotta be, you gotta have a real serious program going on. I mean.
Facts.
I mean, you do, it ain't no joke. So I saw my young, my middle child's basketball team, and I'm like, I, I, I was through it with my older one, and I'm like, yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna go to Kimberly and have them just beat us into the ground. We better, uh, put in some time here, you know, so all summer, I had kids from that grade, and there's sixteen of them, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen of them, depending on how many. A lot of them, most of them came most of the time. We ran basketball skill camps in my driveway.
What?
And in my neighborhood.
What?
For an hour and a half on Tuesdays and Thursdays, all summer long. For real. To get them in shape, we have this block, it's, we timed it out with my, the distance with my cars, point three three miles, right? We'd have them run around that baby, where we'd have a stopwatch, and we'd time them every week, we'd see if their time would get better. Those kid, but those kids liked it. If you wanna get anything in life, if you wanna get better or good at it, you gotta put in the time, the effort, and the work.
Facts.
Period. And that's just the way I approach stuff.
I'm gonna give a shout out to Coach, uh, Martin out there, in case you might be listening, bruh. You know, I'm glad you out here shaping these, uh, young, young athletes, these young ladies, uh, mentally and physically, uh, you know?
Yeah, it takes a villi, it takes a true straight, two bit, true village to may, especially in this world we live in now with all this craziness stuff going on to, um, to help produce good human beings. It does.
It, you know what? That there is a powerful statement, cause it is, it takes a village, and and, um, you, you gotta, I think people have to remember that they are part of a village.
Yeah.
So we're in this together, whether you like it or not, you don't get to be an outlier.
No.
You know, whether you, you, you think you are an outlier, and you don't wanna invest, and you don't talk to nobody, at the end of the day, the decisions that are made for the greater good of the city and the greater community, and even the greater region of the Fox Valley.
Yeah.
We are all invested in those outcomes.
We are invested in helping our youth and helping other individuals in the community become what they can become. And everything I've been, I have been trying to read a lot of stuff on school stuff lately, mostly articles. I'm not a big book guy often, but once in a while I read a book.
Me, too. I'm with you. Articles.
Yeah, I'm an article dude. And there's so many, people like, like to ask you like almost this trick question. Like, what is the one thing you'll do to make this all better? There isn't one thing. There's like, there's ten things. If you wanna have a good school district, there's ten things, man. There's, there's all kinds of things you gotta continually be working at to try to get better, and, uh, um, and I, I, I think that, uh, Oshkosh is great because we have some real stuff, real good stuff in place already.
I do. I, I'm not gonna lie. Like I said, my daughter came up through the entire system, and I think we've got this fantastic, amazing system, starting from really daycares.
Yeah.
All the way through college and advanced degrees and doctorates, if you want them, or whatever, you know, we, we have it all in Oshkosh. We have a very passionate citizenry trying to make us all better.
Yeah.
And, you know, it'd be, if if we can all sit down at the table together.
Yeah, and talks, talk.
And 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 not just talk, because I, I, look, I know, like most, we all get sick of just talking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to find common ground.
Yes.
And we have to have conversations to find things that we can, to me, you know, what I, what I learned from my experience on the town board is to make, to make something really work, right, you need to have, you need to have a vision, you need to have, uh, and you need to have people invested in that vision, you know? And you need to listen to people, I mean, and craft that vision with them, you know, and
Bruh.
And, and, uh, because then they're gonna wanna do it with you.
Facts.
You know? So.
Alright, well, alright, I think, hey, look, I think we didn't, I think we hit that out the park.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, nah, I appreciate you. I appreciate you coming on here and 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 talking, talking to the Kosh's, uh, listeners. Um, so at this time, you know, I just wanna put a shout out there that, uh, if you have any questions, or you would like to share anything, or if you have any, uh, comments or anything you wanna share, please email them to askthakosh@gmail.com. Once again, that is askthakosh@gmail.com. I have gotten very good, cool, really cool comments, uh, from the pa- past several shows, and, um, just know that they do not fall on deaf ears. Uh, we, we are very much in a growth mode, so we are, we are learning, growing, and changing.
Yeah, I appreciate being on the show.
How, how they feel, man? They feel okay over there?
Yeah, it was great. I, I mean, it's, it's just cool to just sit and talk about thoughts and, you know, in the community, for real. And and see, the Kosh listeners, you can hit me up on my Facebook page whenever you want with messages. I will get in contact with you.
Go on and share that Facebook page, man, dude, that, I mean, go on and tell them who you are, so.
I'm Chris Wright for School Board, so if you, you go to that little, that little search button up top and just type in Chris Wright, Oshkosh School Board, you will find me, and you can get in touch with me, and we can start having conversations about things we need to have conversations about, and try to come up with some solutions, so.
I think that's super important. Alright, is there an email they can reach you at, or?
Yeah, I can give you an email, too. It's, uh, chris underscore Wright, W R I D H T, not that I'm always right. One six zero at yahoo dot com. So you wanna hit me up on that, you can.
Alright, alright, well, thank you very much. Okay, now, we're gonna, we're almost done, y'all. We're almost done. We, you know what? We stretched this out, but we went hard.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, I think there was, there was some, there was energy in the space.
Yeah, for sure.
Alright, so, uh, right now is the time when we give our shout outs, or we promote things going on that we wanna promote, so, uh, Chris, please, what's going on? Who you wanna shout out, or what do you got to promote?
Ah, I guess I gotta shout out to my, shout out to, uh, my school board thing. I wanna shout out to everybody else that's running for position in Oshkosh to try to make the community better, and a shout out to the teachers that are in the trenches right now, trying to figure this stuff out and educate our children, and I gotta, I gotta do this, man. I gotta shout out to my wife.
Oh, yeah.
For letting me spend all this time, put these signs up, and I drag her in, uh, drag her into all this stuff. I do get her permission. However, however, she's gotta put up with, uh, part of what it is to run for political office. My kids, too.
Alright, you, you did tell her you were gonna be here, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I didn't want them problems. I don't want your wife rolling up on me. You know what? Cause I'm scared. I'm scared of wives by far. You know what? I'd, I'd, I'd rather face, uh, most grown men than, than very petite wives. I don't want them problems.
My wife's normally pretty chill. I gotta do something, you know, I gotta go that extra inning to really make her aggravated at me. I don't know what it is, man, but.
Fair enough, fair enough. Alright, I'd like to send a couple of shout outs, too, um, to people who have contacted, uh, the Kosh, just, just, I just want y'all to know, I hear y'all, we're making changes, and that, uh, all opinions, voices, and requests are appreciated, so special shout out to my man Brian Munch, uh, to my man Crummy out there. Crummy, me and Crummy go way, way, way back, uh, to my sister Tiff, um, to the wife, cause the wife is definitely, you know, she's, she's been, she's been a saint. She's been, she lets, she lets, she lets these things happen. We could not be doing the Kosh without the wife's blessing. Alright, and then a special, special shout out to Shoreview Lanes, uh, me and a very, uh, close friend of mine, we went there. You know what on Wednesday night about Shoreview Lanes?
What do they got going on there?
All you can bowl from five to eight.
All you can bowl?
All you can bowl. So let me tell you something.
Fun, man.
Look, uh, it, me and my friend went there and bowled five games. I bowled my arm out of socket. I hurt myself, but I'm not gonna lie, it was the best time. They got twenty-four lanes, it's safe, it's open, there's pizza. Uh, I just want Shoreview Lanes to know that the Kosh sees you, we appreciate you, and, uh, it was an amazing, amazing time, and one other thing that I wanna say about that experience is that on the wall, on the far right side, is this memorial from the rec. You remember the rec?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like rec bowling, the rec bowl. That's my joint. That's, that's my, that's, yeah, that's my fam. That's, that's, that's the, that's the family. Uh, shout out to Mike Putzer, love you, baby. Um, yeah, I used to work there for a minute, so you know, most people don't know. But, uh, that, the fact that that did not disappear, and that Shoreview Lanes hung that up to keep up those, the tradition, the legacy of Oshkosh. Man, I, I gotta give huge shout out to Shoreview Lanes. Hey, you ready, you wanna go bowling next week?
Yeah, I'm game, man.
You don't want these problems, man. You don't want that, you know, I'm, every once in a while, I've been known to put out about a, a hundred and twenty-five games, so unless you, you ready to beat that?
I'm not, maybe once in a while. Maybe once in a while.
I'm talking like a hundred and twenty-five is actually doing something, but you know, yeah.
I try to throw this spin, and, and they don't always spin.
What I've learned in the game is that the more you try to do it, the less it's gonna work. It, it, it's not gonna work that way. I've been lucky enough to have a long legacy of family members who are bowlers.
Didn't your family own that lane? Like my neighbors got some flooring from there or something?
Wait, I'm gonna give shout outs, I'm gonna give shout outs to the Stubers, I'm gonna give shout outs to the Pelkeys. I'm gonna give shout, you don't understand, shout outs to the Munches, uh, you know, look, look, the family. Uh, you know, the Putzers, you know, the whole fam, like Oshkosh's finest, some of the finest out there in the game, yes. I bowled hard for a minute. Doesn't mean I was any good at it. Alright, alright, we gonna go on and wrap this up. And, uh, you get to finish it out, Chris, with a little bit of pardon words. What do you, what do you, what kinda wisdom do you wanna bless on the Kosh listeners?
Uh, just, thanks for listening to me, and I appreciate Timber having me on. And, uh, if you like some of the things we were talking about, go out and vote on April sixth.
April sixth is when it is, right?
April, April sixth is when it's at. So, that's, that's about it. And don't feel free, feel free to contact me whenever.
Alright, once again, thank you very much for tuning in. We appreciate y'all for listening to us here at the Kosh. And, um, I look forward to hearing from all y'all. The Kosh.